April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, five thirty P. M. Meetings called to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Forrell. Commissioner Laird.
President.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Nick Lusson.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, I would, first of all, I appreciate you all being here tonight. Recently, we had a death in this community of Bobby Mayer. Natrona County rejects violence for dispute resolution. And I'd like to stand now in a moment of silence in remembrance of Bobby Mayer. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Let's try to get that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Milne, seconded by Commissioner North, to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Those items are approved. The next item on our agenda is under contracts, agreements, and resolutions. Item A, Resolution Thirty-five dash twenty-four, to support the establishment of a Natrona County Senior Citizens Service District and ballot proposition for the formation. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a, we're going to have a short presentation by the proponents of this resolution. Then we are going to open it up for public comment. It's not going to be a public hearing. But we wanted to provide the opportunity for the public to tell us their thoughts and to tell one another their thoughts on this, this proposed resolution to put a question on the ballot for the voters. So with that, can we have the proponents come forward for this Resolution Thirty-five dash twenty-four?
Commissioners, Chairman. My name is Amy Fleming. I am the Executive Director of Central Wyoming Senior Services, also known as the Casper Senior Center. Our organization, along with Jamie Lovell, Executive Director of Natrona County Mills on Wheels, and Herb Wilcox, Executive Director of Wyoming Senior Citizens, are here tonight to request a ballot proposition for, to establish a special district titled Natrona County Senior Citizens Service District. Should this special district be established, the elected Board of Trustees will enact a one-mill levy where the above-mentioned agencies and others who may be eligible according to state statutes would be eligible to apply for operation funds via the grant process. With the elephant in the room, we are very aware of the current state of property taxes, as most of us are homeowners as well. However, this funding is vital to our continuation of services in Natrona County. A one-mill levy would generate roughly one point seven million a year for the proposed district. We may not even use a levy, a full levy. The cost to taxpayer for the one-mill levy would come out to a dollar fifty-eight per month, or nineteen dollars a year for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. You can do the math if it's a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home. The proposed senior district would be governed by five publicly-elected trustees who will serve without compensation per state statute. Significant oversight would be provided per proposed policies and procedures, including independent audits. Each one of us undergo very thorough audits in a single year. Do we be awarded any funds from the proposed district? Agencies must apply via a grant process by which the only eligible entities who show a true need would be awarded funds. There are currently nine senior districts in the state of Wyoming right now. And it is on the horizon for very many others. We have attained several testimonies from these districts, with most saying the mill levy saved at the very least their senior centers, which for most includes mills on wheels. You will see these testimonies in the packet provided. Mills on Wheels serves over seventeen thousands of mills a month and is continually increasing. Wyoming Senior Citizens provides foster grandparents, senior companions, the Wyoming In-Home Services Program, NFC, National Family Caregiver, which is a respite program. They have the state ombudsman and various other services. Casper Senior Center, we served over thirty-two thousand meals last fiscal year to over thirteen hundred unduplicated seniors, with five thousand twenty hours of in-home services to those folks who fall through the cracks and are not eligible for home health. Unfortunately, the services provided to the aging population in Natrona County are at a tremendous risk. Speaking for the Senior Center, the current financial state is absolutely unsustainable. For the past five-plus years, our agency and others have had to dip into our reserves to meet the expenditures of our agencies. For us at the Senior Center, these reserves are nearly exhausted. We have roughly a year of reserves left. Why has this happened? Significant increases in basic expenses, just like we all experience in our homes. Federal and state funding has not kept up with these increases. Federal and state funding only covers less than forty-three percent of our expenses. The same for mills on wheels. Our mill costs for roughly sixteen dollars a mill to produce, where reimbursement is five dollars and fifteen cents from the state and federal government. Jamie, your mill cost is roughly fifteen. She gets two dollars and two dollars and sixty-seven cents for each mill. What's at stake? What could potentially happen if the agencies serving seniors were forced to decrease services, or worse yet, close? Many of our people would be forced into premature institutionalization, creating a tremendous burden on taxes. It is far cheaper to keep them in their home to taxpayers than to institutionalize many of them that would be on Medicaid. Food instability. More often than not, the mills we provide are the only meal a person gets that day, or the only person they see that day, in such as in mills on wheels. Very little funding for senior programs exist. I search high and low. Jamie searches high and low. Herb searches high and low for funding, both statewide and nationally. We can't make them work in our perimeters because there isn't very little for seniors. The senior population is in the midst of a monumental explosion. By the year twenty thirty, one in five people in Wyoming will be over age sixty-five. Over one in four older residents in Wyoming live alone. We are simply asking the commissioners to allow the ballot proposition at this time. Let the public decide with their vote in November. Should there be any questions from either any of you or the public, please feel free to reach out to me at the Senior Center. I'll be more than happy to speak to anyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So we have a number of individuals here tonight. How many, just by show of hands, how many wish to speak on this issue of the proposed seniors' district? All right, so that's great. We can manage that. You know, we have a five-minute cap. You don't have to use all five minutes. You don't have to repeat what the previous speaker said. You need to be courteous. It's not a question-and-answer session. But let's, let's go ahead and start. So please approach if you'd like to speak on the proposed resolution for putting the seniors' district on the ballot.
Rose Magzabon, Natrona County resident. Good evening, members of this commission. Thank you all for allowing me and others to speak before you tonight. I reviewed the packet you received from the Senior Center. What I see in the budget includes an influx of funds from the federal government to support staffing for COVID. That inflates the funds received from twenty-two and twenty-three. We have recovered from COVID-nineteen. We have maintained a high level of spending and have not reverted back to two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty spending. This request appears to be a premature reaction to that particular setback. Are we really ready to increase the budget for what we could ultimately increase fiscal irresponsibility at this time? What I did not see in the packet was just how much is in the Senior Center's reserve account balance. The mill levy system has been severely abused in the state of Wyoming. It has created unaccountable slush funds with no oversight by people who can hold these board members accountable for the individual special districts. These slush funds aid and abed the property tax problem that has yet to be resolved. These special districts absolutely need to be limited to administrative functions that restrict levies to just the absolute need of the budget rather than what they can legally receive. One mill is being requested through the Resolution Thirty-five dash twenty-four, and it would provide approximately one point seven million dollars annually. This is based on two thousand twenty-three county value numbers as provided by the assessor. However, Wyoming Statute eighteen dash fifteen dash one oh one gives authority for this special district to collect a maximum of two mills. This happens through a budget revision that could happen within the first year of passing if elected, bringing the total to three point four million. For a current budget, that is now one point six million. I must question why this is being considered now on top of rising inflation rates and with everybody struggling to buy groceries and pay local property taxes. Why too is it that in this packet, there is no indication of public taxpayer support documentation provided for this resolution? Will this provide just another government-aided, excessively-high-paying job with an above-average pay wage and retirement cost to all of its employees? Is this the best use of our tax dollars for those people feeling entitled to receive a better way of life than for those this is intended to help, above the rest of us, at the cost of all of us? This is a very important issue to me and without question the seniors of this community. I'm not unsupportive of the legitimate need, but this will raise property taxes. What little relief some of the seniors did receive, I will insist, was not nearly enough, only to have this compound and take away that which was given. A step up in fundraising would pragmatically be another way to distribute the burden, especially considering one full mill is not necessarily needed. The Fund Wyoming Summit held last week in Riverton, Wyoming had a plethora of government grant opportunities that worked predominantly for five-oh-one-C-three organizations. That would be a great resource for the Senior Center to use. Above administration needs, would grant writing continue, or would reliance on the additional mill occur in the future? Just to recap, this received no measurable public feedback from those who are being asked to support this before the resolution was drafted. The Senior Center does have reserves to support its operations to buy the taxpayers' time. This, is this tax increase worth it to take away seniors' homes? Placing them in governmental aid housing results in what would undoubtedly be an even larger detriment to all the residents. The people are being asked to vote on yet another tax without pertinent information. If this is approved tonight, this commission would be putting the burden of work on the people who are opposed, responsible for educating everyone about the impacts and their wishes. Before this commission votes to approve this, consider that unless fiscal accountability is used as a doorstop, this, like so many other special districts, will simply be a runaway train. I would strongly encourage and recommend this resolution should at the very least be amended, including a cap on the amount that can be withheld in the reserve account, or a sunset of two to three years to encourage fiscal responsibility and accountability of the people's money. I would also suggest this be tabled until the reasonable questions that I have asked can be answered. Most definitely, this should include more public input, especially from the senior population. This will affect the hardest.
Thank you.
Their feedback needs to be solicited. I have one final question. How many people here tonight believe we should stop imposing taxes that endlessly increase and extend into perpetuity?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Judy Jones, three thirty-five North Eight Mile, senior. Thus far, we've had increases in property tax, electricity, hunting, camping, license fees, permitting, water, sewer, food, fuel, now this too. What do you think we're made of? Money, boys and girls? I mean, come on now. This can wait a little bit. Let people absorb what they've already gotten pretty much shoved up their rears the last seven months, you know? I love Pat to death, but Pat's never met a tax he didn't like. He's been in favor of one-cent funds, twelve-twenty-four clubs, senior medical expansion, gravel pit, new library, David Street Station, Huggerock. And that's just what I know. I have a friend who gets meals on wheels. I want to know, do they know how much of their stuff really goes to waste? I go over to him, about four of them, because we're all, you know, sixty and sixty-five. They have them stacked up in their refrigerators, five and seven high. And they get, they got food. You know, they signed up for it thinking that they needed it when they really didn't. But they've got all these TV dinner kind of things sitting in their fridges going to waste. I'd like to know just how much is going to waste. And as far as anything else, I know that, let's see, Banner Health gave them, what, fifteen K to Meals on Wheels, and the senior got some money too. The point here is, I think we've had enough with the taxation, boys. I think we can wait just a bit. If the seniors in town want to vote this in, then let them pay for it with their property taxes. I don't want to pay for it because I'm not going to use it. I'm not going to need it. I have a way to feed us clear into our eighties. I'm a prepper. But anyway, that's, that's the idea, is this, this is just another bleeding-heart program. Oh, give to the kids, and let's give to the seniors, and let's do this. Oh my God, we're going to run out of money if we don't do this. I want to know how much money they got. I want to know where their funding comes from. I've found some of it. But this, to me, it's just, it's too soon. People are just too shell-shocked right now with all the extra taxes they've already had. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak on this proposed resolution?
Pat Sweeney from Casper, and a homeowner and taxpayer. And I appreciate you, your consideration on this. What's being asked is put it to the voters. This would allow, by passing this resolution tonight, to go to the vote of the people. And it's up to us to educate on the very questions that have been asked. And this goes on the primary ballot. And that'll be the vote of the people. And so that's, that's what we're asking for. And it will be up to us. This isn't some harebrained scheme I came up with, but I'm supporting it because it is needed. Some of the questions asked are very valid. The reserves are down below where they can even sustain another year for the Senior Center. And this is, this mill levy, we could ask for two, but we're not. We're asking for a resolution to pass to go to a vote of the people for one-mill levy. And, and then, yes, there'll be a board elected by the public. That will be in the general election if approved at the primary on the ballot initiative. So again, thank you for your consideration of this. And what's wrong with people being able to vote? Yes, there's a need. No, this is not to build a big slush fund. And we definitely have shown the need and where the federal and state funds just aren't keeping up, especially for Meals on Wheels and the Senior Center. And again, forty percent. And they have to go out and raise funds for the rest of it. And it's not sustainable. So is the answer to just cut back, curtail services, tell the folks that Meals on Wheels serve to, no, you can't sign up. We don't have funds available. And maybe that, that's what needs to be done, but that's not what I think Natrona County is all about. I believe our county is very giving. And yes, what about our timing? There's no good time to talk about taxes, frankly, and especially right now with property taxes. But we see the need, and we hope to, with your help, educate the voters once this resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. My name's Linda Bergeron. I have some points to make about Resolution Thirty-five twenty-four. I'd like to say, first of all, be careful what you ask for. Number three of the whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Natrona County has received a request from representatives of Central Wyoming Senior Citizens Services, Natrona County Meals on Wheels, Wyoming Senior Citizens Incorporated, to submit a ballot proposal to the Natrona County Clerk for the establishment of a Senior Citizens Service District with the boundaries of such a district to be Natrona County and establish a tax levy, a tax levy of a maximum of one mill to be imposed on the taxable property of the district. I've been involved watching government for quite a few years and remembering back on a city council ask. They had asked for the ability to go into our homes to inspect, inspect inside our individual homes. Now, as far as I can remember, that request was initiated by Meals on Wheels because they were feeling quite sorry for the citizens, especially elderly citizens, because their homes were unkipped and not up to code. And so one of the city council members asked in a in a work session, where will these people go if their homes are condemned or they're not allowed to live in their homes anymore? A representative, Liz Becker, said that she felt that they could sleep on a cot in life steps. So I'd like to bring to your attention, be careful what you ask for. I'm asking you to vote no on the growth of bureaucracy? Okay. You all sit on the Board of Equalization. Think of what your feelings are when you're there. Our property rights need to be flourished, not to be taken away. And the worst blunder of the county commissioners that I believe that's ever happened is when you sold the Natrona County Memorial Hospital. If you talk to the nurses that live there or work there, they're in misery. They can't believe what's happened.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Cindy Brainerd. I am a taxpayer also. I've been in Natrona County for twenty-five years, and largely during that time period, I have worked with, in the medical field with our seniors. All I can do is tell you what I've seen and where I see things going. In the event that this tax doesn't make it to the ballot and at least be put to the people to vote on, you're going to see an increase of institutionalization. You are going to see an increase of failure to thrive in the home. Oftentimes, these meals are the only meals that someone does receive that is hot and nutritious because it's easy for them and it's not something that they have to prepare for themselves. I was a little disheartened by the comment for senior entitlement. I have a heart of service. I have served this community for many, many years in different aspects. Who are we if we don't, if we don't protect the most vulnerable in our community? What does that say about us? In the event that folks do become prematurely institutionalized, where are they going to go? Here in Casper, we already have a population problem in these institutions, in the sealed nursing facilities, in the assisted-living facilities. There's a waiting list. So if this program is no longer available, you are also going to see an increase in depression and, again, failure to thrive. And oftentimes, seniors will take their own lives. Casper has one of the highest suicide rates. And I feel like we are doing a disservice to our community by not allowing this to hit a ballot and letting us make the choice for that. As a taxpayer, I myself would not have a problem paying twenty to thirty, forty dollars a year to support my fellow community members here, to make sure that they are happy and healthy in their own homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
The previous speaker, a couple of us didn't catch your name.
My name is Cindy Brainerd.
Thank you, Ms. Brainerd. Sorry, ma'am. Go ahead.
That's all right.
My name is Susan Burke. I am a member of the Senior Center Board of Directors. I am president of a local nonprofit called the Casper Senior Network, which is a number of different entities that work to help keep our seniors safe and thriving here in our community. Before I retired, I spent several years working with hospice. So I have been spending many years with our seniors and with their needs and with the issues that they face in this community. I am also a homeowner. I am a taxpayer, and I am a senior. I'd like to point out a couple of things. The Senior Center The Senior Center, without this kind of funding, will have to cut services by about fifty percent, if I understand that correctly? Yes? So, that means cutting staff, that means cutting programs, cutting services, and putting a cap on the number of meals that we can serve every day. So, none of us, nobody wants to be, have to say, we cannot serve you a meal, if someone comes to us hungry. We all aspire to be seniors. There are a number of seniors in this room tonight, but I would like to think that people who aren't seniors, at some point, would like to be and make it that far. And you may not need these services now that are being offered. You might not need the free meals. Maybe that's not something that you need, maybe you don't need home health care, maybe you don't need help staying in your home. But that doesn't mean you won't, in the future, or that your loved ones, or your friends, or your neighbors, might not need these services. They're very important, and the entire point is to be able to keep people in their homes and out of the institutions, to be able to age in place as long as possible, and give them that quality of life. That's what all of these services are about. It's not just the Senior Center, remember, it's also Meals on Wheels and Wyoming Senior Citizen, Inc. I have also been a driver for Meals on Wheels, and I will tell you that there have been times where we went to deliver a meal, and the person didn't answer the door. We're like, hey, Mike didn't answer the door. He always answers the door. So, when something like that happens, what do we do? We call up Jamie, we say, hey, he's not answering the door, there could be something wrong here. And they follow up on it. They are, make accountable. Meals on Wheels is another set of eyes for the seniors in the community. And also socialization, or, you know, if they're alone and don't have people to come and see them. I don't like taxes either. I'm not happy about taxes. They're not my favorite thing. I will tell you that I believe in Wyoming, let me put it this way. I inherited a small home in Iowa when my father died, and it's smaller than my very modest home here, and the taxes are more than twice, the property taxes. So, I, I think our property taxes, nobody likes taxes, but I think, I know in my heart, I am more than willing to give up one lunch a year with my husband at La Costa, and a Starbucks or two, to be able to help fund the seniors and their services, and make their lives better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to have something to say here. I didn't even hear about this meeting until today, so I don't have a tablet or anything prepared.
What's your name?
My name is Buck Elston. I'm a property owner in North Casper. I pay my proxy taxes for the forty-five or forty-eight years that I've lived in the same home, small home. I've raised my children there. Can't afford to pay my taxes all at once. I pay half in November, and I pay half in, in, well, just, just recently, just by May 5th or something like that. So, I can, I pay them though. And I've complained about my taxes. But I have been using, I'm seven, almost seventy years old, I'm sixty-nine years old. And we hear about, well, if the seniors want senior services, let them pay for it. They have paid for it. I've worked in this town and community for fifty years. Most of my work, I was a welder. I was on my hands and knees, or standing on a ladder, working at my toes or over my head. I paid my taxes, and now I live on Social Security. And I go to the Senior Center, and I love that place. I eat meals there, I don't eat there every day. I see people there that I've grown and loved, people that are wearing a hat that says Purple Heart recipient, people that are veterans, many of them, that spilled their blood for this country and for this city. And I read the, the book about the history of Natrona County, and when John Merritt lived, moved into this city in eighteen eighty-eight, and he was the first resident of Casper. And the citizens that flowed in, they were waiting for the railroad to come, and it did, and the city grew fast and quick. They pulled together, and when there was a need in the community, for any person, seniors, fires, anything needed, the community pulled together and supported one another. And I support the seniors of this city. And I would gladly, though it would raise my taxes twenty dollars a year, because my house isn't worth, no, two hundred thousand dollars, I'm, that's, I couldn't spend twenty dollars and get more value out of it on anything else that I can think of. I appreciate it, and I want it on the ballot.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Peggy Elston. I've been a-
What was your name?
Peggy Elston. My husband just spoke right before me. We have paid taxes on our home for, like you said, forty-eight years, and we haven't got anything out of it. Our kids did go to school, I know it helps with our schools, but now, we decided to go to the Senior Center, and that's our, our place where we can go. And I teach a craft class there, where it helps for our seniors to come. They like to, the time that they get to spend with other seniors, we, they talk, they laugh, and they just need this time where they can get away and spend more time with other people. And I am for this levy to put on the ballot, and let our seniors and our homeowners that have paid taxes all these years get something that they deserve in their older years. And that'd be, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak on this?
Hi, my name is Gwendy Ritz. I too am a Natrona County taxpayer, I own my own home. I am a Medicaid waiver case manager, so I help people to get onto Medicaid and help get them supportive services here in the community. I feel that this levy needs to go out to the taxpayers for vote. I look for, I guess, these services that these people are providing to help provide daily food, support, nutrition, the companionship, the, oh my gosh, we use the services for housekeeping, for those that can't get up and get around in their homes. These services are vital to keeping these people out of the nursing homes and in their homes. Support, I guess, the other thing that we could use is transportation in this community, that's something that we're lacking altogether for these seniors here, but the companionship and respite time for the caregivers, the family caregivers that have to work, or the tip for them to be able to go out and go shopping, to get things to keep their households going with their elderly mothers, dads, aunts, uncles. So, that's, I am asking for this to go on to the voters on the levy, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for holding this meeting, we really appreciate it, we appreciate your time. I'm Sylvia Spethman. As a proud citizen of Natrona County for the past seventy-seven years, I have lived here my entire life, I have always worked with other people, and I see a great need right now, I think this is a really good idea, and I am all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have, my name is Diane Morrow. I'm a homeowner, a taxpayer. I moved here in two thousand, and I love it here, I love the way the people take care of each other. I've been going to the, I am gonna be seventy-seven in June, and I see a great need for the meals and all the activities that all of us use at the Senior Center. A lot of us couldn't go and pay at some lifetime or someplace like that to go exercise. At Senior Center, we can dance, we can do exercises, we have just the camaraderie of others. I see tables in the, in the lunchroom where people are forward to their friends, their familiar faces. Three of my four children live out of state, and I've seen other seniors whose children live far away, and as they age, we have friends that are not in their nineties, those kids don't come to take them to the dances that we, that we have at the Senior Center, they can't come all the time to take them to symphony or, or plays, but the camaraderie with all of us that go to the Senior Center, we go pick up a lot of the people that we've met. We're gonna be that age eventually, and hopefully, with this kind of place here, we will continue to help each other. I moved back to Michigan where I'm from, to, for two years, six, sixteen to eighteen, I moved back, and there was nothing. I, I called all the communities, no places that had this kind of thing. The lunches every day, dances, exercise, the quilt makers, the, you can name it, we've got something for every senior to do. So, thank you for listening to me.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, my name's Ron Brooks. I'm a longtime property owner, I've lived here over sixty years, and based on the words I've heard here tonight, this issue deserves to be on a ballot. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the proposed resolution for the establishment of the senior citizen tax district?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for holding this meeting. I just heard a comment from somebody that they thought this one-
Would you state your name, please?
Oh, my name is Joe Moss. I'm president of Meals on Wheels. I've delivered for twenty years. I've seen all kinds of things during that time. A lot of the people have stayed out of nursing home for a long, long time, and then it's typical, when they do really get older and their health goes down so much, you know, they can't even bathe or take care of theirself, and they have to go to a nursing home, but we keep them out of there for a long time. One of the comments I heard that, they talked like the one point seven million was quite a slush fund. Our budget is over two million dollars a year, people don't realize that. And we serve a lot of people, and they're coming on all the time. Thank goodness for volunteer drivers, they don't get paid, not for gas insurance or anything. So, I just think that if we don't have some help, we're, we are gonna have to cut back on services, and hopefully, I'll never have to do that. One customer I had here the other day was just a son that come in from out of state, and his mom and dad was both sick. And when I delivered, he says, you people are angels. He said, I don't know what that had done if you weren't here, because he says, I don't live here. He says, bless your hearts. So, we do a lot of good for a lot of people, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we will close the public comment part of this, and now I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion.
Would you be more specific, Commissioner Laird?
Yes, I, I just want you to know that, since I'm the oldest person on the commission, I wanna make the motion, and I make the motion that we adopt the resolution to put this on the ballot for the people of this county to vote.
Very good, is there a second?
I will second the motion to approve Resolution thirty-five dash twenty-four.
It's been moved by Commissioner Laird, seconded by Commissioner Milne. I know there's, I have some discussion, but I'll open it up for Commissioner discussion.
All right.
Commissioner Laird.
Thank you. It's all, it's always nice to see all y'all. And everybody's gonna be a senior someday if they live long enough. And a couple of things we've done here, one of the things is, is that we have people who die here that have no friends or family or money. And the county's dealing with that now to take care of burials for those people, and perhaps even finding out who their relatives are. So, if you can't help children, and you can't help seniors, I don't, I just don't think you should even be in office. Now, I'm voting for this for the reason that it's up to the people. When I took this job, I said I was not going to support any new taxes. Now, this happens to be one where the people get to go and vote on whether they want this or not. So, you all have to search your own souls how you vote for this. But one of the things that's always complained about, well, we don't have a say in these taxes. Well, here's a time when you get the say. So, I hope you show up and vote what your heart believes you should do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Laird. Commissioner Milne.
Chairman? I'm not gonna get into the senior, whether I believe we need to support the senior or not, I think that's pretty self-evident, what a person should do for our elderly. But the great thing about the US, you know, is the vote, we have a vote. We always talk about the vote. I don't see any reason why anyone would want to stymie that process. This is, all we're being asked is to get this on the ballot so you all can vote on it. That's all we're asked to do. It's per state statute, it's following the process. I, I do not want to block that, I want you all to be able to vote, as Commissioner Laird said. You wanna vote on taxes? Well, here's your chance, you get to vote on taxes. I would not stop that right of allowing people to vote. It, it's, it's, I don't quite understand that one, but it is what it is, I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner Milne. Commissioner North.
I don't like property taxes any more than anybody else does. You know, that's, property taxes are something that our legislators battled over this year for multiple of reasons. But one of the things that we did do is that we talked about having the people have an opportunity to vote on things. You know, I did not support making the one cent, or the fifth cent permanent without the voters having a say in it. I believe that's where it should always go. I think the, I think the citizens, whether I like it or not, whether I like a tax or not, I think the citizens are the ones that need to decide how they're gonna be taxed, and if they're gonna be taxed on things. I do support our, our senior citizens. I've had a lot of friends that have used Meals on Wheels, been drivers for Meals on Wheels, and have used a senior center. I had a great, my wife's granddad was out there for a long time and helped out. If we were asking today- If we were asking today whether I would support this as far as voting for it, don't ask me that question, but that's not what we're asking. What we're asking is to whether the people of the county should have the opportunity to make that decision. And I don't really, like I said, I'm not, I've listened to a lot of BOE hearings and a lot of people complain about their taxes. Well, if you don't like your taxes, vote it down. And I'm telling you right now, the odds of this making through are not very good because of the citizens of this county are tired of paying their property taxes and everything else. So um but if they wanna have more taxes, then they can vote on it. You know, that's, this is probably one of the hardest decisions that we have to make because these type of things that come before us, when we're against something as a principle, but we're allowing the voters to make the decision, the people, the citizens of this county to make the decision, that's where we have to put our, our personal thoughts aside. That's where we have to think about letting the citizens have the opportunity to vote on something. One thing I disagreed with is bringing this resolution before the commission right now and not collecting the signatures that could have got this on the ballot by itself. And I told, I told you guys that this afternoon. You know, you would have had fifteen, you know, most of the people in here have signed a petition already where there are six thousand votes that they got within four weeks. It can be done. And that's the way I prefer these things to happen. That's not where we're at right now. But I do believe that, that we need to give the people of the county a chance, whether I like it or not. That's not what you're asking us to do, you're asking us to give the people of the county the opportunity to make a vote, not, not whether we approve of it or not. So there is a difference there and I wanna make that very clear, that I am not going to vote tonight to, whether to raise the taxes or not. But that's not what this is about, this resolution is about the opportunity to give you the chance to decide whether you want to increase your taxes. So.
Thank you Commissioner North, so um I don't think this is a hard decision, I think this is an easy decision. Um I don't, I am not against this in principle, I am for this concept and um I don't know how I'm gonna vote in, when I'm called, when it's on the ballot, but it's gonna be on the ballot and I can't see a way of me not voting for this and here's why. I, I wanna take care of our seniors, I think we as a community need to. I think they are a vulnerable population, just like our minor children. Uh now, there was some discussion initially that, you know, they ought to cut expenses. Um boy, I haven't seen any of my expenses go down, not on my grocery bill, um not on my, my property taxes, um not on anything and not, certainly not on the construction projects, the capital projects that the county has and the other projects that I'm involved in. Uh everything is going up and so I am very much aware of that fact. Now, um I, I don't know uh much about the Wyoming Senior Citizens Inc., but they provided a really nice colorful um kind of feature sheet about the different things that they do. Um they have uh multiple programs to help seniors, they have forty-eight program volunteers, um this is just in Natrona County. Um newsletters, um uh almost, let's see, ninety-five percent of clients are, are over age fifty-five. Um but I do know about Wyoming, Central Wyoming Senior Services and I do know about Meals on Wheels and um you know, my uh grandmother got Meals on Wheels for years and years. Um my father-in-law delivered meals for Meals on Wheels for years and years. And I tell you that the common denominator is the best part of their day. And, and you know, a lot of people like to think we take good care of our seniors, we take good care of our parents and we're busy. But for someone to be able to be in a position to reach out um and have that personal contact with those folks, that makes a difference. It makes a difference physically, because it's a meal, and it makes a big difference mentally. Um so, you know, I, I am a fan of these organizations. Um I um know a number of volunteers from over the years at the Central Wyoming Senior Services. And, and, and I think we heard um from a very remarkable speaker tonight how impactful it is that even if he can't afford it, he's gonna afford it because it's the best part of his day. He didn't say that exactly, but I got that sense. So um I, I think this is a slam dunk in terms of us saying, "Let's put it on the ballot, let's let the voters decide." I believe in that, but I think that as a community, we make exceptions sometimes to our principles of lower taxes. Personally, that's the direction I see myself going uh when it's time to be, when it's time to mark the box yes or no. So with that, um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we do have an additional public comment period on other matters. I just wanted you to know that if you're here to pub, uh comment publicly on anything else on your mind, uh you're, you're welcome to do that. There, there was a proposed, um well, there have been some other issues that people have been commenting on recently and I see some familiar faces, so welcome again. One thing we did tonight was we applauded the speakers, which um I'm, I'm okay with tonight, but, but let's, let's refrain from that, I think we're gonna be a little quicker and it's a little less disruptive. So um hold your applause. Any public comment, please approach.
Good evening commissioners and thank you for
um aye. If, if you're here to listen or to participate in public comment, please join us and please be respectful. Um if you have other conversations, including with respect to the senior citizens tax district matter, um I'd ask you to step out into the hallway and you might step aside from the doors a little bit, so it's a little quieter in here. Um thank you ma'am, go ahead.
Sure, uh my name's Carolyn Griffith and I live uh up on Coats Road. And uh first of all, I'd like to thank especially Commissioner Laird and North for attending and speaking uh to the State Lands and Investment Board on April fourth. Um I, I think your voices were heard, they were appreciated, um and, and certainly heartfelt and, and again, thank you for doing that. I think at this point, I know, I'm, I'm sure you're probably aware, uh an application for a limited mine operation permit has been submitted to the Department of Environmental Quality. And uh you now have skin in the game, I'm sure you're feeling that to some degree. Um and, and mostly because of, of zoning regulations that you currently have, how, what those mean, what those mean to you, what those mean to the county and uh how they'll, how they'll be enforced and applied. And uh before that even occurs, I would, I would hope that you would consider not even considering a conditional use permit, um that it, that may not even be applicable in this point. I think there are other responsible parties that uh should preclude you having to make this decision. And uh you may be aware, there was a case heard before a judge up in Teton County on Thursday that was a similar type of situation. Uh I listened to it and uh I don't know why the State Land and Investment Board would put the onus back on you to control lands that they allowed a lease on, maybe unvetted. And so I, I think that you're in an unfortunate spot in that regard and I, I think that needs to be researched further. And anything that you can do to, to encourage that research, that, that, that application was properly vetted would certainly be appreciated and I believe it's strongly needed. Um with all that being said, I just wanted to present you with my usual. Um I don't think that you need me to read everything that's on the top of it, um but we do have another almost six hundred or so signatures, it's a little less than that. So we are upwards of pushing six thousand now. Um and I appreciated Commissioner Milne's comment about we all, we all have a vote and, and, and God knows if this was a vote and we asked the citizens of Casper, you know, "How much you want this thing?" Um I'm, I'm betting uh there, there'd be a less than a five percent that said, "Yeah, you know, let's, let's, let's pull the rock off the mountain, it would just be such a nice thing for our community." So in any case, uh do you get them again Commissioner Laird? Oh, see, I'm bypassing this time. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you ma'am.
Commissioners, thank you for your time, I, I appreciate all you guys' ability to support and at least attend the SLIB board meeting.
Jason, would you, would you introduce yourself?
Yeah, sorry about that, it's Jason Cano, forty-seven sixty Ross Ridge Road. Um and I know some of you couldn't stay for the whole meeting, but it was still greatly appreciated to see that, that you were there to at least attend and support the community one way or the other uh with that meeting, so. Um as we found out in that meeting, uh well, we, some of us already knew, but I guess it was kinda hammered home uh with some significance with all the regulators at that SLIB board meeting, that this is an extremely flawed process with that LMO. Um there's no regulations at all. Uh and I guess there's an extremely flawed process when you actually get into the mining process and the mining application and permitting process with DEQ. And that was very relevant at that meeting too, is, is there's no control of rock offers, there's no control or oversight on groundwater, there's no oversight on groundwater studies. I mean, they really are just concerned about airborne pollutants and what those airborne pollutants could get into the surface water. So there's, there's zero part of regulations or studies or oversight on our water rights. Um we all know water rights are very powerful uh in this community. Um you know, before there was indoor plumbing and if you couldn't eliminate the Civil War, more people were killed over water. Um and that's where water rights came about, was to stop people from shooting each other. Uh one, one department that's been very disappointing to me and most of our representatives have been very responsive and have gotten back to us, voted board members, representatives, regulators. The State Engineers Office has not responded to any comments, have not responded to any phone calls and have not gotten back to anybody on this matter whatsoever. Um so we're gonna put together a, a forceful letter to the governor, letting it know his department hasn't even actually spoken up on this matter whatsoever. And it's not even putting an opinion to this matter. Um I did have in the handout, because I like to bring some new information, this is kind of some old information, but it's updated by me. This is, this was put together um off of that same spreadsheet from the State Engineers Office that I've been presenting to you guys and some data off of that. This is a summary that was put together by a petroleum geologist out of Oklahoma. Um his main uh part of his company is to evaluate aquifers and assess uh the source water for frac operations, obviously this is a mining operation, but his, his whole idea is basically looking at aquifers. This is really just a summary, there's not like a lot of blown, blow your mind information, but it's a summary of that table that I've been presenting to you guys, which is tough to read, it's really small print. Well, if you turn about halfway through, there's an outline of the actual affected wells that we've determined would be more directly impacted, which comes down to a hundred and eight wells, now that we've looked through the table and the data and, and the proximity to the mining location. Now that they a hundred and eight wells, we are looking at a, a static water elevation average of about twelve feet and an average well depth of thirteen feet. Uh so this is very shallow aquifer, there's not much you can do in this aquifer without affecting this aquifer. And it's very disappointing that it is just completely getting overlooked by our regulators and by the state itself, especially the State Engineers Office, which their only purpose to even be created was to protect our water. And here we are, asking you guys to protect our water. So I appreciate you guys' time um and uh have any comments or questions.
Thank you and we can uh maybe try to assist with your getting in touch with the State Engineers Office. Um maybe I'll talk with you after the meeting about um who you've tried to reach out to.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jason. I got a question or two, if you don't mind. So on your selected water well statistics map, you're looking at a twelve-foot static water level, thirty-foot well total depth. On your uh bullet points in the back, you're looking at forty feet and then seventeen feet, just for I like numbers to look the same, so I'm kinda curious where you're, what, what you're trying to show right there.
So the, the active wells are a little shallower, the higher you're going up on the mountain?
Mm-hmm.
And so the lower you're going down, the little deeper you're, you're getting more deposits on top of your saturated zone? Your saturated zone is where everyone's pulling the water out of. And so your, your depth is going deeper as you're getting farther away from the, the mapped area there, the well mapped area that you're looking at.
Okay.
Um as you look at the, the hold list, the depth, the total depths, I mean, it goes down to thirty-six hundred feet, right?
Right, right, right.
So we're trying to narrow that, that, that database down to just the affected zone wells of just everyone right below that alluvial deposit. Uh bench, there's basically a bench when you go up there and you see it drop off, these are all those wells that are directly right, right on.
What I had, I feel in your, that's what you're trying to say.
Yeah.
If you try, if you propose this or send this or whatever to somebody else, you might try to I'm not saying how to do whatever, but you might wanna list that out a little bit so that it's, it makes a little bit more sense instead of.
I, I do appreciate that, this was actually put together by this Dan Creighton and I have never actually met this gentleman. I've never even talked to him on the phone, we just got in contact and this, I mean, this is kinda what he does, so we sent him the database and he kinda just put this in his data program and, and shot us back this stuff pretty quickly to give you guys kind of a display and more information that goes with that.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Good, thanks sir.
Boy, you opened that door.
Yeah, I guess, I guess we started the applause and, and, but, but let's do try to keep going, next sir, come on down.
I get two minutes, right? I'll make it fast.
Negative two minutes.
Negative two minutes, I gotta make up time.
There you go.
All right, well, my name is Bill Sugar and I live out on Coats Road. And I was at the April fourth meeting with the State Board. And during that meeting that we, they had, all they kept saying was the county had no control. They, "We can't do nothing," is exactly the way it came down. And Representative, or the State Secretary Gray was trying to get some way to buy back the um leases and everybody there was all worried about the money. And I, I see this as, you know, it's just greed. You know, eighty cents a ton, let's just sell Casper down the, in the road, you know? But one of the things I would like to see is one, a limit on the weight on the road, on both roads, Squaw Creek and Coats Road, because they're not built to take heavy truck traffic. traffic. So he can't get the trucks in or out of there. The second thing I want to see is that we don't buy gravel from him. The county probably purchases an awful lot of gravel to do county roads. If we don't buy it from him, he's going to be in a hurting status. That's the only way we can fight back. The other thing is, is that when he starts hauling gravel out of there, we're going to lose our property value. That means the property taxes are going to go right down the tubes. I would like the state to take the loss in that, not the county. So you figure out what our normal taxes are, what you turn over to the state, you take that out first. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Greg Walker, 7,000 Coates Road. And I guess I want to say, first of all, I didn't know we had a senior center, and so I'm excited about that, and maybe I could go have a meal there. After the last gentleman spoke, and I know him, I don't know that we have our economics right, so I want to go through them one more time. And I know I'm, I'm being misrepetitious, Mr. Chairman, but the gravel today is selling for 16 to 18 dollars a ton. And according to Mr. Kyle Truitt that was at my house and explained this to me, it takes him about 8 to 10 dollars a ton to extract it and pile it. Transportation's on top of that. Out of that, these leases get the state 60 cents a ton, not 80 cents. And, and the, and the one thing I forgot last time, the, the county gets zeroed, and the city gets zeroed. And the first condition to a CUP is that there will be no undue burden on the county. Well, how can that be? If you don't get anything, and you got, you got to make sure the road's right, the county road's right, you got to maintain it, how, how could it be a, not an undue service? And it also talks about the environment in the CUP, and I'm going to, I'm going to continue to hand out the requirements to a CUP and continue to pound that point home. I just don't see how MR1 zoning is conducive to a CUP for extractive mining. It boggles my mind, especially after going to the lands board, state lands board meeting, and we're doing all these wonderful things for all the cities around Thermopolis, and all these are going to be the tourist attraction, and all this, and, and we're going to, we're going to put the senior center on the ballot, and I'm going to vote for it. I'm a, I'm a positive. I think my little 2,500 I spend on taxes is a pittance. Am I going to support another 20 bucks if that's the right number? You dang right I am, especially for our seniors. So, so I hear you guys say it's going to be tough, not for me, not for me, I'll vote for it. But is all I got to say is, we're doing all this, why would we consider putting a wart on the face of Casper Mountain? Boggles my mind, why we would even consider it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Anna Canoe, 4760 Ross Ridge Road. I'm not good at public speaking, as you can see, but mostly I was worried about our water. Our house is very close to this mine, one of the closest that you'll see. We're about 150 away, feet away from the state land, so we'd be 300 feet away from this mine. But I don't know if you read, there's a town of Yoder, Wyoming, that has a mine located in their town, and seeing the detriments of that town is amazing. And now I'm not worried about just water, but more about the health aspects. The dust that that gentleman has seen on his house and his health, he can't breathe. I mean, I don't know if y'all have children, but I'm a mom, that's our life. I don't want my children out there, I don't want them breathing that stuff, I don't want anything that will harm their life. And seeing the pictures of that town and that mine that close, it's insane. So on the conditional use permit, when it says, will it impair the, will the conditional use permit cause substantial environmental problems, or affect public health or safety or welfare? How can it not? Like, seeing those pictures, it's like looking into the future for our Casper town, worse for the people that are right here next to the mine, it's insane. Would you stay? If you were 300 feet away from the mine, would you let your kids go outside? And not to hammer home the, the SLIB meeting again, but again, the water quantity is not, it's not even an issue. And that's why Prism Logistics, they said that we can mitigate everything, because some of that stuff, they don't have to mitigate, they don't care, they don't have to worry about the water quantity, they don't have to follow those rules. I just, I just, I can't, there's no words. The laws for the LMO, I feel, are antiquated, they're not what this mine of this scale is for. It's crazy that they have to go through an LMO, but no matter LMO, SMO, or large mine operation, it just, it's still going to affect us the way it is, the water, the quality of the air, everything. It just, we're collateral damage to him and his aim for greed and money. This could be elsewhere. And that's all I have to say, but thanks, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we're going to take a short break, come back in a few minutes. So what we will continue is the decorum of not applauding, and you're up, sir.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner, gentlemen. My name's Jim Harvey, I live on Squaw Creek Road. And this issue that we're discussing is beyond reason to me. I think, I believe, a lot of us believe, that if this LMO goes through, and he begins mining up there, this is going to turn into a full-blown mining operation. It's not just going to be 15 acres, it's not going to be just five years, it's going to be an ongoing process. So the, a group of us have been talking, and after all of the meetings, after all of the government officials have discussed everything, we keep being told, find professionals, find professionals, bring professionals in. So we're looking at bringing these professionals in, and the cost to us, the people that don't want this, is going to be upwards of a quarter million dollars, possibly. It's, it's, it's an unreal, and it, and it's a, it's a number. I mean, we, we have talked to some officials or some experts that charge as much as $900 an hour. It's ridiculous. So you can't just get it done in an eight-hour day. It's going to take a lot of time, it's going to take a lot of different experts, and we need, the burden of proof has been put on us. We think the burden of proof should rest on the state. They're not going to check this stuff out prior, they're going to wait until after the fact, when they've got no measuring stick. So we need all the help that we can get. And we are trying to raise money, we're, we're trying to do the right things, we're trying to walk the higher path. We need all the help we can get. Anything that you guys can do to help us is greatly appreciated. Everything you've done for us is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Hang on just a second. Go ahead.
My name is Bridgette Brennicky, I'm a resident of Casper for 28-plus years. Some of the things that the people before me spoke about are in this thing that I wrote down quickly after work when I heard that Mr. Truitt had taken out a permit for the mining. Wyoming's about wide-open spaces, most people that live here refer to Casper Mountain as a landmark. When I first moved here, people would say, oh, well, no, the mountain is south, or if you want to get there, you want to have the mountain on your left, or et cetera. To think that we're going to destroy that, mar it, is unconscionable. I'm sure there's a reason why Casper became a settled area and a city, probably because of the beautiful landmark of Casper Mountain and the wondrous Platte River. To think that one man, a Casperite, I believe, could even entertain the thought of destroying the history, the beauty, the resources that the city has brought to, our city has brought to many over the years, is to say, at least, is upsetting, disappointing, and frankly, disgusting. Thousands of lives are at stake for the price of one man's greed. What are each Casper citizen's lives worth? With the inherent water and air pollution that a gravel pit, and let's be serious, a mine, will produce, Mr. Truitt is holding a guillotine over our heads, putting a price on our health and our well-being, because the cost of transportation will be costly if he moves it away from the city. We are a very large state and very sparsely populated, yet it is still nothing to consider the health of thousands. It is an inconvenience of transportation? This action Mr. Truitt proposes will be willingly contributing to the destruction of our town and the pollution of our basic needs, air and water. I've worked in a bentonite plant and mine very far out of Casper, and in collecting the bentonite, rocks, et cetera, must be crushed to reduce the material into usable granules, which vary in size from dust to pebbles, not much different from gravel. In that process of crushing, just like making gravel, there is a dust, a very fine dust, that is emitted in this procedure. My question, and in fact, my point to make people aware, is that this dust created from this process needs to be watered down. Residents are already worried about their availability of water, considering we live in a high plains desert, and now there will be an added strain to the water resource? Has Mr. Truitt ever addressed this? Also, we're in a, a city willing to let all the hard work and money that has been put into making Casper an even more desirable place to live, with the upgrade to downtown Casper and David Street Station and the Three Trails Center, to name just a few. And so we're just going to let that money be spent, and then there will be nobody here to live here? It's going to be a blight on the, on the mountain, not just for the water and the air pollution, but for the site. Who wants to move to a town that has their mountain destroyed? Anywhere that you drive from Casper, from any direction, you can see Casper Mountain. We live in a town where you can see miles and miles and miles. Once that dust starts to come up into the air, do you not think it's going to be visible? It's going to be visible as well as inhaled. As far as I can see, Mr. Truitt came to one of the meetings at the beginning, said his piece somewhat arrogantly, because he said that we didn't know what we were talking about, and he hasn't been back since. If he wants us to understand the situation, perhaps he could come address the public and the residents of the city and help us to understand. Instead, he's going to certain people's houses unannounced to talk to them. We're, we're a community here, obviously. We appreciate that you guys have let us speak, we're very concerned. I think it's interesting that a lot of people that I've talked to have not even heard about this situation. It's not on the regular news, Oil City News, they, they, you know, do some advertising or, or speak about what we've talked about here. You know, some might conclude that it's the action of someone who doesn't care, who plans to hide behind his money and greed to get what he wants at whatever cost. People of Casper and elected officials need to open their ears and hear and see that this gravel pit and mine is only wanted by a few and not by the many who make up this great city. Should this go through, Casper will indeed become a ghost town.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, who's, who's next? She's not next. County legal. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Tim Pierce, I've been a resident of Casper for 10 years. Didn't plan on speaking tonight. My point for coming was just to show the commissioners that this is a movement that's growing, new faces are going to show up, new faces are becoming aware of this issue, and I think it's extremely important that the county stand up and use its power to protect what makes Casper so great. When I look at the conditional use permit, the one that really sticks out to me is, will it affect and impair or alter the character of the neighborhood? My wife and I, after being here for 10 years, bought a, bought a property that's our dream property, right adjacent to the so-called limited mine. If the leases are to be believed, this mining operation can extend within 300 feet of the backyard where my eight-year-old son and my six-year-old daughter play. That's not something that I would expect to see in a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, and that's what we have there, the Wolf Creek neighborhood, all of that is a beautiful neighborhood, children play there. And I know there will be a time to address this, I hope that as a community, we could pull together the money to get the experts that can show truly the impairment, but I can tell you what my gut tells me now, is I don't want my kids playing where they could breathe in that dust. I don't want to have my family barbecues where I can hear rocks being crushed, that's not why we bought our dream house. So I hope that you can protect not just the interests of those that live in this neighborhood, but I agree with everybody else, the interests of the entire community in avoiding a blight on Casper Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who is next? Good evening.
Thanks for allowing comments. My name is Maria Catherman, and I lived in Casper for 35 years and now live in Converse County. And she talked about experts. I wouldn't qualify myself as an expert, but I have lived next to a gravel pit on our place, and it's about 300 meters, 300 feet from our fence line. And so the noise and the dust is real, and it goes on, starts usually right at dawn, and in the summertime, that's 5:30 in the morning. And the trucks are what people fear. But the other thing that we've seen is, just like there's very few regulations around these limited mine operations, there's also very little regulations about the reclamation that's done. And so whatever the miners may say, what you... what you really end up with is a gravel, flat gravel parking lot at the end of the day. So that's something to consider. But, and I think everyone that lives around there has given you a clear picture of what, how it's going to change their lives. But I'd also like for you to consider one other thing that I'm not hearing. And that is that, you know, there was a time where the river in Casper was viewed as a convenient place to put sewage. And the refinery had some leaks there while it could go down the river. We changed that as a community. The, the river is a big draw now. And I think that recreation on Casper Mountain is exactly the same. And there's a missed opportunity for the county, I think, in these state lands. Because like Boulder has that green line, you know, and you go out to Boulder and it's full of people. And these state sections could be a huge attraction for people. You know, the, a few places for parking and the trails could be magnificent. You have views of the river, you have views of the town. It could be a real jewel for this town and this county. And so I think that's a lost opportunity by deciding instead to sell it for 80 cents a ton. So I, I would like for you to, as commissioners, to look towards the future and think about, how can we use these lands in a way that is an asset for the county and for the community? And I'm not talking about just those that live around there. This could be something for the whole town. The trail, as all of you know, I'm sure you go up Garden Creek Trail these days, and the Bridle Trail is packed. People are hungry for this, young people that want to live in a place like Wyoming. And those state lands are kind of unknown. And it's nice for those of us that live around there or go to it to not have to have a lot of people. But it could be a really big asset for this town. But not if it's just a gravel mine. And you go up there and it's trucks and it's just gravel and destroyed area. So I, I hope you'll think about that. I'm the author of the Casper Mountain Field Guide. And we considered doing those state lands. And we ended up being short and decided, no, you know, we can't include everything. But we considered that because of the rich natural community that's up there, that people can see there. And you know, there's no place else that I know of in Natchona County where you can just go and see those along the little creeks. It's, it's amazing. And so I want you to think about it as an asset instead of just some land that's open for views because it could be something for this county. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Who would like to speak next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bob I, 3838 Garden Creek Road. I don't, I've spoke a couple of times the last couple of weeks. I won't carry on. Everybody said everything real well tonight. What I do want to find out from hopefully you guys tonight is if you could explain to me and the people in here how this LMO or this conditional use permit works with the county commissioners regarding this LMO. I don't know, you know, I heard that they'd filed the conditional use permit. Just wanted to, so that hasn't happened yet?
That's, that's correct. That has not happened.
Okay, I wanted to make clear that.
Yeah, the county has not received any application.
You have not received the conditional use permit. My next question is, if you do, what is the process of, of how that's handled here at the county commissioners? If you could answer that question, that would be great. Just so everybody kind of understands what the process would be if you do receive a conditional use permit.
Senator, I thank you for the question. I, I think what we're going to do is during commissioner comments, either I or the county attorney will briefly address that. But basically, there, there will be plenty of notice. We have control over how much notice and when these things are scheduled. So it would not be, and I would commit as chairman, that we would not rush this thing through. We will make sure that we have provided robust public notice and lots of opportunity for, I hope, multiple public hearings. Okay. I, I think that once that application's filed, then the, we have in our regulations, the process is kind of set forth. So I think you can see that, as I recall, right in the area near where the conditional use permit application criteria are. I, I think it's addressed in there. But we can get into that more in a bit.
No, that's very good. Thank you. That satisfies my questions. And I think it maybe sheds a little bit of light on the process that'll happen. And I presume the bringer of the conditional use permit would be speaking to the commissioners as well as if it gets to that point. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for going to the meeting last week or two weeks ago. My name is Roberto Fars. I'm a board-certified internal medicine doctor. Been practicing in Wyoming for about 22, 23 years. It's my dream state. I love my neighborhood. I love my neighbors. I'm very concerned for their health. People come up to me and say, "I can't sleep. I'm stressed. They're taking away my water, my savings." Chronic stress is really detrimental to people. And it shows up in many ways and it affects multiple organs of the body. Now, I can split people's head open with information and talk about all the chronic stress things. And I'm willing even to give a PowerPoint presentation on it. That's not a problem. But I am very concerned because this is affecting the, the health of my community. I don't want a sick community. Number one point. Number two point, I was reading that the sand from the Sahara Desert travels all the way to the Amazon forest in measurable amounts. That's 6,000 miles. So, there's a disconnect here, I think. We talked about the senior center thing that's, which is very important. But then as soon as that was resolved, all the people left. Like it doesn't affect other people. This will affect the whole town. It will affect the next town. It will affect Nebraska. It will affect South Dakota. I mean, 6,000 miles. That fine dust, which can go in your lungs and it stays there. You can't remove it. It causes your auto, your immune system to try to get it out. Just like when you get a tattoo on your arm and your immune system tries to get the ink and the metal out of it. It's chronic inflammation. How am I going to prove that for years from now? Then we'll have to bring back the Marlboro Man with the Horace and the oxygen. To, I mean, but it's, I mean, it's a serious thing. I mean, everybody knows in their heart that this is a wrong place to do a gravel mine. Do we have to buy canaries and put them at our door? So when they die, we know we're next? I mean, it's not good for the city of Casper. It's just, um... It could be done places where human beings don't live. Our society has changed. Our city has gotten bigger. Maybe 40 years ago, when this law was passed, there was no houses on, on the base of the mountain or the state land. It was different times. We have, unfortunately, when, we live in this society where we live under artificial lights, which is affecting us even tonight, us staying in here, looking at this non-native EMF, see? So I'm very concerned and I hope you guys can help in any... I don't know whose responsibility it is to say, "Hey, this is a wrong thing to do. I know the law is this way. We haven't looked at all these consequences that this might bring. I don't think it's the right thing to do. The state, the state land there, whatever, we should have done more homework. We didn't know all these people lived there with all the water wells and praying that it doesn't run out even in normal times." And so, I mean, who's, who, who can make a decision and say, "Hey, this is a wrong thing"? I mean, where are we going to draw the line between money, profits, and human beings and souls? I don't want to see another soul suffer. Period. I don't care if you have to live under a bridge destitute. But you can't hurt, like, at a certain point, there has to be some common sense and say, "Okay, we heard a million people. We all know the consequences in our heart. We, we all know this is a wrong thing. But we're all playing like, oh, this thing and that thing and that statue." And I understand. But at, at a certain point, we live here. We want to live here. We have a beautiful town. Let's keep it that way. Actually, let's, let's take some time to create other places like that so people can go outside. Where, you know, since electricity was invented 120 years ago with Tesla AC current, we moved all inside. We need to go back outside and enjoy that state land. And every day, there's people, 10, 12 cars there, using it, using it. And I love it. I know it's right in my backyard. I don't care. I welcome it. I tell people, "Come and get some water if you're thirsty." I mean, you know, my house is open. So I hope you guys, I know you have a lot of responsibilities. You got to hear a lot of problems. You got to hear a lot of complaints. But this is a big one for the whole town. I mean, that's all I have to say. And again, they'll probably hear me again. But, I mean, I'm not against mining at all. I wish I had a mine myself, you know? But I wouldn't definitely not go build it in downtown or next to the city hall or, I mean, some common courtesy where at the point where I start encroaching on your thing, I need to stop. And that's common English law. I know you guys, there's a lot of lawyers here. And with, yeah, it's common English law.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Bye. Good night.
Any other public comment?
Terry Wengler in Casper. I think you have my address, 1420 Horn Church Avenue. You know, I said a few weeks ago, I've never seen this county in such uproar in my life. And I've been in and out of politics here in this county for a long time. In fact, in the 80s, when Dallas was suing the city about the wind, about that shopping center up there on Popular Street, I was a city councilman then. And I'm the one that got the phone calls, believe you me, all the dust going into those houses and all that. But I don't know what more you can say about this project that's been said over and over and over again for the health of the people in Natchona County, especially the ones that live up on Squaw Creek and Coates Road. You just got to figure out a way how to stop this project. I don't know if the, the county commissioners have had their spring meeting yet. Have, have they had it yet? Well, this might be a good project to bring up to the county commissioners at the spring meeting. The more associations or the more individuals you have fighting against this project or getting involved in this project, the more it's going to help. So I beg upon you as county commissioners, as elected officers, but not just you. I mean, I'm talking about the state-elected officers too. And our senators from Natchona County, our legislators from Natchona County, I don't know where they are, the ones here, representative, I mean, sorry, Senator I. So, but anyway, find a way how to stop it. I know you'll do your best. And that's all I have to say. Oh, by the way, I am a senior. I know I don't look like one. But I have my, I have my ID if you want to see it. But I am a senior, so, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak on any matter? Come on down, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Roberts. I'm not good with talking in front of people. But I feel like I should stand up. It's on my heart. This last week, I started taking some of the petitions around. I've been dropping them off at other companies. And I'm kind of shocked, or not companies, I'm sorry, I misspoke, other organizations and talking to other people. And I'm shocked by how many people really don't know what's going on right now. The more people they're learning, the more built this is getting. About three years ago, we moved here. We haven't lived here as long as all these other people, but we lived about 30 minutes north of St. Louis. We come from a place where there's not much water in the creeks and it's orange. We don't have many animals like you do here. Get to see a deer, we're excited. Get to see some turkeys, we're excited. Well, my husband, he's in the oil field and he decided, um, he said, "Hon, let's, I'm going to transfer him, go up to Casper." I started looking up about your city. You guys, you're known for your beautiful mountain. You're known for your fresh air. You're known for the beautiful wildlife. And this is going to put a very big hurt on this city. Already, people are talking about it. It's getting bigger. And the more bigger it gets, people, more eyes and the whole nation are going to be looking at us, seeing what we're going to do about this. I understand he can make money off the gravel pits. And I understand all the, you know, his side of, you know, but at the same time, I think you can stop it yourselves in a way. When it comes to you, refuse to let it go through. Don't let, don't let this affect this city because you guys got something wonderful here. We all have something wonderful here. And once it's done, it's done. It can never change back. I know I was looking up some stuff about gravel pits and to see the pictures of the gravel pits and to see the pictures of the beautiful land. That's what's going to happen here. So I feel like it's on my heart to stand up and let you know. More people are being informed all the time. More people are finding out. More people are opposed. So let's hope you guys can help us all out here. And let's do something about this. And let's keep this as one of the most beautiful cities. When I looked up Casper, one of the things, like I said, it kept talking about is that mountain. So maybe we need to protect it. Maybe we need to make sure nobody else can come in and hurt it anymore either. And if anything goes through with more gravel mines or anything else that can hurt this land, it needs to be stopped by everybody, including all you guys. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak tonight?
Uh, my name's Toby Westbrook. I do not live in Casper, yet. So I don't necessarily have a dog in the fight yet. I am going to be transferring down here with my family. I have actually walked or driven up there and checked out Squaw Creek and Coates Road. It's a beautiful area. I am an environmental engineer by trade. I've been in the mining industry. I've been in the oil and gas industry. So I have a little background in this, in this field. What people I don't think here are going to realize is how much this will really affect the entire town of Casper. I applaud everyone here that lives up, excuse me, in these areas because it will affect them directly. But it will affect everybody in the town of Casper. I've heard a couple of people talk about it briefly. The dust particles, the fine dust particles, there are particulate matters that's small enough that like Mr. Fars said, it will get into your lungs. It is a, it's a huge environmental risk. I'm a huge fly fisherman. That's one of the appealing things for me to come to Casper. It's going to affect your river. It's going to affect your streams. I've done so much, so many studies on, on surface water and groundwater, mostly in the Gillette area with the coal bed methane mines. It does affect it. And those wells are deep. Those wells are 500 feet deep, 400 feet deep. We're talking the surface water level of 13 feet. There's no confining layer between where the gravel pit's going to go and what's going to happen in this water. What I haven't heard about is, one of the biggest problems you're going to see is the turbidity in everybody's well is going to go through the roof. It's, it's going to be astronomical. You're not even going to be able to get a heavy-duty enough filtration system to keep your, to keep your water clean. And that's just, that's just the tip of the iceberg. There are so many more things that environmentally this is going to affect. I urge you guys, if you guys have any power to stop this. Again, I'm, I'm moving here. I'm not here yet. I urge you guys, if you guys have any way to stop this or prevent this from happening. Again, I've heard so many people say it's a blight on Casper Mountain. It is. Casper Mountain's a beautiful area. I love the mountains. Spent a lot of time up there. It will affect it permanently. The reclamation will not be done to your standards. And I think this is your duty as county commissioners to do everything you can to, to halt this progress going forward. Good luck with it and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bruce Coats, 5454 Coates Road, Field Creek Ranch. Um, we're forgetting something here under this conditional use. Mining has to be held off 300 feet from a residence. Trucking is part of mining regardless. But once they go up there, they, they do this, they pile it, they load those trucks up and down that road. There's a lot of houses that are only 50 feet off that road. And, and trucking is part of mining. I think if you look into that, that's a very substantial thing. And I believe that is probably something that the lawyers should look at because I really believe that trucking, until that truck is delivered, that is still part of that mining operation. So... that trucking, until that truck is delivered, that is still part of that mining operation. So food for thought.
I've already looked at it.
And?
We'll talk about it when we get our chance.
Okay. I knew you would. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hello, my name is Linda Vineyard and I live on Coates Road. One of the things I'm not sure that has been mentioned is the, the people that use that road, and it's a county road, use that road for jogging. They use that road for walking. They run, they allow their dogs to run in front of them as they go up the road. And even the National Guard uses that road to train on. And I live on the corner, on a corner of Coates Road, and it is barely wide enough for a car to go down it, let alone a huge gravel truck. And I think that's another issue that the county should look into. I don't think the roads will support huge gravel, gravel trucks and still have safety for those people that live out there.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Last call. Anybody else? All right. Well, we appreciate seeing some, some of the regulars and we appreciate seeing some new faces. So thank you all. We appreciate you showing up tonight. At this point, we will close the public comment section and we will open it up for Commissioner Comments, Commissioner Milne.
So, go ahead and step off the topic of gravel. I know it's pressing on your minds, but I'm still going to go off that topic. As asked, and it was an honor to speak for the board concerning Bobby Ayers murder. It's, it's definitely not something that you want to do, but it needed to be done. It's a first step, you know, addressing the problem, talking about it so that you can move forward and come up with a solution. We had a little tough with, with my boy. Him and Bobby weren't friends, but they played ball together with and against. So it hit my son pretty, you know, he asked about it. We talked about it. It is upsetting that something like that would happen in this community. But we all need to take and address this. We all have tasks that we can do to try to help bring about our community so that this doesn't happen again. The, the culture of violence that we have, did you know there's a Facebook site, Casper Fights? They're recording this stuff. We've got a culture in Casper of violence. With those kids, it needs to stop. My pastor, this Sunday, he addressed it. And, and we all have our, have that call. We all need to do something. We need to address it. Others have already started working on it. And I'd, I'd ask that each one of you do something as well. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Laird.
I want to read you, since I'm a lawyer, I got to read you a statute here that got a little overlooked by some people. I know the lawyers up in Teton County that are battling the same battle. And I know what's, I know what's happening down in Cheyenne with respect to what the state's position is on whether commissioners should be able to do anything. And it's a little scary. Now, it's kind of interesting what this Wyoming statute says, and this is the land board, for those of you that were at the meeting. "The board shall promulgate rules and regulations implementing policies, procedures, and standards for the long-term leasing of state lands for industrial, commercial, and recreational purposes under the provisions of Wyoming statute, including provisions requiring compliance with all applicable land use planning and zoning laws and permitting the board to terminate a lease for a good cause shown." State's got the power to do this, right there in that statute. Now, there's another rule that the state land board has that coincides with this, but it's their rule that they have, like we have rules here, has a rule about how they have to pay attention to these zoning and they have to make arrangements for it. And I think the state has missed a few things. But I'm going to tell you one thing, I'm not going to miss them when it comes to us. Now, what's going to happen is if the state passes all this and it comes to us, then we have a hearing. Our zoning board probably hears it and then we, then the zoning board hands it off to us and we have a hearing. That's just generally it. But no matter what happens there, it's going to hit the courtroom. If we vote against him, it'll hit the courtroom. If, if we vote any way, on any side of it, it's going to hit the courtroom. So we have to have a hearing that's solid, that has testimony that's just more than people's general opinions that they don't like gravel. So I'll give you an instance. It's Coates Road. So I talked to our road and bridge guy. He says that won't, that won't hold up to those big trucks. But he's an expert. He can testify to that. And then today, guess what? Today, we dealt with it, with a gravel pit that's going on out at a ranch that we approved. And I asked our, our guy, Mike Egler, I says, they going to have a rock crusher out there? And he says, yes, it's part of the deal. He, I says, are they noisy? He says, oh yeah, they're noisy, but it won't bother the turkeys and the deer and everything. And I says, well, would you want to have that in your neighborhood? He says, no, I sure wouldn't. Because that's, that's a loud piece of equipment. And that's, that's one of the things that he would put up there. So you get back to our, our issues with our, what rules we follow. And, you know, Mr. Nicolais and I are lawyers. We're sworn to follow the law. And there's some things some of you cited that talks about what we have to do to protect our people. And I know every inch of it. It's my sworn duty to protect the people. And I hope that's good enough for all of you.
Commissioner North.
I don't think it's any secret about how I feel about the gravel pit up there, so I'm not going to go into that. Most of you have talked to me and you've heard me testify on that. So. But what I will talk about is something that came up about four weeks ago when we were talking about adopting codes and the new codes. Since that point in time, I've been working with our building officials and looking around and finding out just exactly what we can and can't do. And the biggest thing that we have to do is we have to adopt the codes to start with. But then, once we adopt them, we can actually go in and vacate portions of those codes that we don't like. That's what we're planning on doing. We're going to look at that. We're working with our building official. And Pat, you know, we've been, we've had a lot of conversations over the last four weeks. And he contacted all 23 counties. He talked to 30 different individuals in those counties and found out what they do and what they don't do. And we talked about what we can actually do in this county too. And so I know Jason had a, had a conversation with me about that, but that's the process that we have to take. The way the state statutes are written, we have to adopt those so that we can have home rule and vacate those portions that we don't like. That's what we're going to look at. That's what we're going to start moving into. You know, with his guidance, I'm going to, I'm going to follow what he wants to do and how he wants to do it. But we're going to look at that and find out what's best for this county and move in that direction. So I just wanted to have that on the record. I wanted everybody to know that we didn't just pass them and that was it. That's just the first process. You have to start in that so that you can go through and make things better. So if you don't, if you don't adopt them, then you're tied to it. The way the state regulations are set and the statutes are set, they've kind of got our hands tied. And I've also talked to some of our legislators about changing some of the laws that we have right now. And we're going to be working on some of this. So I'm a firm believer that we need to get rid of some of the regulation that we have, not just in this county, but across the state. We need to make it better for the people and not adopt everything that just comes out just because that's what we're told we have to do. I don't believe that everything that comes out of the code books is good. Several years ago, there was a, a thing in the International Fire Code that they tried to pass where every residential property would have to have fire suppression in it. Fortunately, that got killed. But that's the kind of stuff that we have to look at. We have to be familiar with it. We have to know what those codes are. And we have to get our legislators to work with us on, on changing some of this stuff so we can make it better for everybody. It's just like the LMO. There's obvious loopholes and we've all found them. You know, we know what those are now and we know what the problems are. Unfortunately, I think that our elected, our state elected officials now understand what some of those loopholes are and hopefully they'll start working on getting those changed so we don't have this problem again. Thanks.
So, once again, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate the comment. My, my, I stated I would go over some of the, or, or our legal would go over the notice and, and opportunity to be heard provisions that are in our regulations. I, I just want you to know, instead of wasting time on that, you can review those yourselves, but I think I would point out the importance of the things that say public hearing or hearings. Okay? So we have already envisioned situations in our zoning resolution where it's going to take more public hearing. It's going to take more public comment. It's going to take more time. On the notice of publication, it says not less than 14 days notice. Guys, don't even, don't even give one second's thought to us running this thing through. You got 6,000 signatures telling us not to just run this thing through, right? You, you folks are really committed. You're here. We're committed to doing our jobs the best we possibly can. And that would require us to go slow and methodical about this process. We want to do the right thing for the community. You all know my family's been here since the 1880s. I, I, I have been on both sides of industrial development issues. I, I've, I've lost some of those battles and we prevailed in some of those battles. So I know what you're going through and we talk about experts. We talk about fact witnesses. You're going to get a good attorney or attorneys and they're going to help you understand what role you're going to play. And some of you in this room are experts and you'll be able to testify. And, and more importantly, not only testify as an expert, but it'll hold up in court. As Commissioner Laird said, you know, it's not if, it's, it's when it goes to court. So it's that kind of caliber of testimony on issues that are, that, you know, need expertise. So in any event, we're going to provide lots of notice and opportunity for you all to be heard at the appropriate time. If we get a conditionally used permit application, our position continues to be that it is required that the, that Prism Logistics or anybody else come to us for a conditionally used permit, whether it's on state land or private land. And, and we are going to go to bat, or we are going to go to court to enforce that public right. At least, that's my feeling. I shouldn't say we are because that sounds like. But, but I think that the commission feels really, really strongly about local control on issues exactly like this. And that there's no better forum for this to be done than by your local government, not by folks in Cheyenne. So I was impressed. I, I made the, I made like the first half. I had a meeting. During that slipboard meeting, I was there till about 1:15 and then I had a collective health trust of Natchona County and Banner Health meeting that, that had been previously scheduled. So I had to duck out for a few hours. But I made the, some of the closing commentary and I know Representative Harshman also spoke at length about some of these issues and is also looking out for the interests of the community in this respect. And, and we heard that you guys should be really proud because I've never seen it done where the Board of Land Commissioners says, okay, we're going to reverse course on something like this. It's, it's unprecedented to my knowledge in, in the whole state of Wyoming. So we'll see where that goes. There are going to be some negotiations apparently between the state and the, and Prism Logistics. I'd like to be a fly on the wall, but I'm not. But anyway, continue the effort. Continue coming to talk to us. Continue dealing with folks down at the state and in your legislature. You know, we started the meeting tonight with a moment of silence involving this tragic incident that occurred. And I think that it, it has hit the community hard and I don't want us to forget that moment and that vigil that I attended. It was really remarkable, well put together. But, you know, you could just see on the, the faces of the youth how so many of them probably hadn't stopped crying for, for four days or, or, you know, I mean, they were in tough shape. But then there was a glimmer of, and maybe not just a glimmer, but there was also a lot of support. Those kids had each other's back and, and I was super impressed with that. And that's what we need to grow. And kind of, you know, on Commissioner Milne's comment, we can each do something. Maybe that's in public, maybe that's in private, in the confines of our home with our kids. We can be better parents, better grandparents, better whatever. But, but we can do better and we owe it to our kids and our community to do better. And so thank you for setting aside gravel pits and senior citizens districts and some of these other things for a few minutes and, and really just focus in on, on what's really critical for, for your family, our families and our community. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
And the purpose will be for personnel and real estate. It's been moved by Commissioner Milne, seconded by Commissioner Laird. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We will come back into the room, but only for the purposes of concluding the meeting. So have a good night, everybody. So, um, have a good night, everybody.